This is Miriam Raftery with the East County Magazine Show, and this is also broadcasting on KNSJ and on our East County Magazine website. And today I've got some very special guests. We have on several of the candidates who right now are leading and may be new faces on our four East Counties, on three of our four East County City Councils. The candidates out in Santee were unable to join us, but we're hoping that they'll be able to catch up with us with a separate interview next week. So it's my very special pleasure to interview from Alcohones, Michelle Mitchell and Stephanie Harper, who right now are separated by just 44 votes in a six-person race. That's very close. Jack Shu in La Mesa, who along with incumbent Colin Parent appears heading for victory over incumbent Christina Licio and three other challenges. Jack, welcome. And out in Lemon Grove, we have George Gastel, who along with Leanna Laberin, who wasn't able to make it today. They are in the lead for two seats in a four-person race, and it looks right now like they may be replacing Councilman David Arambula and a fourth candidate that's trailing the others out there. So I want to thank all of you for joining us today.
Thanks.
Okay, so I'd like to start by asking each of you, what was it like to campaign during the COVID-19 pandemic? Jack, let's start with you out there in La Mesa.
Well, we're warned that it would be very difficult, which I think it was to a certain degree. So we use a lot of no-contact kind of campaign methods. So mailers, of course, phone calls, postcards, and literature drop without ringing any doorbells.
Yeah, I saw you out there spinning your campaign, your sign like a champion.
Lots of signage. But I'll give you one example of something that just didn't work well, which was originally I wanted to have Zoom meetings, like having a coffee with a candidate.
Yeah.
And I realized very early that they weren't going to work very well, because you know, when people go meet a candidate at a neighbor's home, in part they're going there to meet the candidate, but they're also going there to get good desserts. And I can't offer that in Zoom. So I don't think those meetings went as well as I thought they were going to be. I had a number of them, but they weren't as attended well enough.
Thank you for that strategy. We're however, I know, on a number of candidate forums, and La Mesa is somewhat unusual in that they do several of them. We held one. We weren't the only ones. So I think that was another way that became really important. They've always had candidate forums, but this time they were virtual. So it's kind of a different world out there. George, out in Lemon Grove, what was the secret to your success out there campaigning during COVID?
Well, I think my victory might have had a lot to do with the fact that I was on the ballot eight times before.
On the council, we might add, and then you were off for a while.
Yeah, I was one of the leaders of the sales tax measure in the spring. And when people did Google searches on me, they found that even before they found my website. So yeah, there was quite a lot going into this campaign. I did do quite a lot of campaigning. I think the things that helped, probably door hangers. It was a great year for door hangers. And I teamed up with David Arambula and his team. He had an amazing crew of people. And we got out several thousand door hangers all around, all over the city. And I was very much pleased with that. I also think sign waving, it was a great year to wave to people at intersections. I think people want to see the candidates. They want to feel some of the energy that we're feeling.
Yes.
And standing on street corners and waving to people was a good way to do that, and definitely not knocking on people's doors. I really didn't want to bug anybody. And so it wasn't just that I was afraid of COVID. It was more that I just didn't want to bother people. They have to go get a mask just to come to the door, and then they find out it's a candidate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see Michelle. Michelle has that knowing smile, like, yeah, we think we're important. The average voter, they, you know.
Michelle, what do you think about that? I believe you did walk some precincts, didn't you? And you were kind of an unknown candidate. You mentioned it's the first time you've run for anything, just the opposite of George, and yet, you know, here you are right now on top of the race. So what was your secret sauce there?
You know, I think it was just lots of signs, some big ones. And I had a lot of support. My husband, my rock, he helped a lot. And I think we had the campaign mobile. So if anybody was driving around Alcohones, they saw the black Toyota Tundra with the big signs and the lights. And we just drove around town. We did sign checks. And we just drove the major streets in Alcohones and just did a lot of, you know, contact with people that we could. I did a little bit of waving. And my grandkids and my daughter and my son-in-law and my husband, they put a lot of door hangers out. And we just took, you know, a flyer that would have been mailed out maybe, and punched holes and put rubber bands and put them out. And just to get my name out there, because I'm nobody. And I've never run before. And so, and coming in late, we just did what we had to do.
Okay. And Stephanie, how about you? How did you campaign during COVID?
Well, it was a little different than whenever it ran in 2016. And it was a little bit more difficult, because I thought I'd be, you know, an old pro at it, but I was still kind of way behind the ears with this whole COVID thing. So I had a lot of supporters. I had some people putting mailers out for me. I did, like Jack was saying, it was very difficult going up to doors and things like that, because people having to pull out their masks and stuff. And I didn't want to bother people. So I tried to catch them on the afternoons that they were outside, you know, in their garages and stuff like that, and walked up to them like that. I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that I ran in 2016. So my name was already out there on the meetings that I attend for the city council. So I think this was one of my words.
Yeah, I think maybe though, there may be more to it than that, because at least in some of your cases, I know with Michelle and Stephanie, you were in a six-man race. One of the people in that race was a very well-known person who's been on the planning commission, was a, you know, citizen of the year, known throughout the chamber and things like that. So Michelle, what do you think was, might be the secret? I know you told me when we went on the air before that you had, you had an interesting theory about that.
I think this year was the year of the woman. And I think, you know, Stephanie has run a great race. Her and I get along well. And I think it was just a matter of it was girl power this year.
Well, it's interesting that the third person in your six-person race is also a woman, Letitia Dickerson, an African-American woman. And she is running just, you know, not very many votes behind the two of you, and then trailing quite a bit behind that are the three men in the race. So maybe you're right. I don't know. And then we have Sam Hurst on Santee and Leanna Laberin out there in Lemon Grove. And of course, Lemon Grove's mayor, the incumbent, Raquel Vazquez, looks like is hanging on to her seat. So there may be something to that.
Not La Mesa, that La Mesa.
Well, yeah, not La Mesa. You're right. It did not hold true out there, because Christina Licio appears to maybe have lost her seat. And Laura Lothian, who was endorsed by the Republican Party, actually was, I think, fourth in the race, last I checked, out of six. So it's not completely consistent.
The numbers in La Mesa likely to change, because I can tell you, Democrats were voting early. And I, you know, Jack and I know a lot of Democrats. And I grew up in La Mesa. And I know half the people Jack knows. And they, they were sending in their ballots early. And so we could see some change in La Mesa.
That is possible. I think all of these races, we do need to emphasize, they're all really too close to call right now. We have seen some shifting, you know, all over. That said, you know, Jack and Colin's lead has held steady since the very beginning. Some of the other races have, you know, tightened or flipped. But it isn't over until it's over. And we do know that Republicans tended to be more apt to vote in person on the polls at Election Day, maybe because, you know, they seem to be a little less concerned about COVID and all of that. But some of the late mail-ins may depend where they come from. We just don't know. Later candidates, you may have seen something online, or an article, or a form, or something that gave their views. So we really can't predict the outcome firmly yet in any of our local races, or for that matter, what's going on nationally at this point, as we're taping this on Thursday afternoon. I would like to ask, though, what you think the key mind, key issue or issues were on the minds of voters? And Jack, let's start with you on this. La Mesa certainly had a lot going on this year, besides a COVID pandemic, as if that isn't enough. There was, there were protests over racial injustice. There were police issues. There was a destructive riot. There were, you know, controversies over developer donations with one candidate. A lot of different things going on. What do you think these results, if they hold, mean in terms of why voters are most interested in the candidates at the top of the ticket right now?
Well, I know for me, you know, I helped advocate and form, and then was served on the law of public safety oversight task force that eventually recommended to the city council. And now we have a community police oversight board in La Mesa, and which is very independent, and hopefully will function similar to what just passed in the city of San Diego. So when I served on that task force, a lot of people saw my actions there as the vice chair, and that helped me. And that was a major issue in La Mesa, that we needed to develop some process to oversee law enforcement, as well as work towards law enforcement reform. So that's a major issue. What we're dealing with in terms of the economic impact of COVID-19 is another issue. And people want to know, how can we get out of this?
Right.
How can we restore the kind of economy that we had before? I think that's all very important to people. Development issues center mainly around some projects throughout, or mainly in the village area of La Mesa. And I think there's some process issues that we need to address at the city level to give citizens more of a chance to have input, and also develop some broader criteria. And so that we can really build a kind of development that is people-oriented and community-oriented, as opposed to using some economic model driving these.
Do you think that party loyalty, and perhaps coattails, may have played a little bit of an effect in La Mesa? The top two right now are both endorsed by Democrat, by the Democratic Party. And obviously, the demographics in La Mesa have shifted. Last I checked, it's a majority Democratic now, more than Republicans. So you may also have benefited from that. Do you think that that was a factor?
There was a factor. And I worked hard to make sure I got the endorsement from the county Democratic Party and other Democratic clubs. La Mesa has been a blue city for a number of years, yet we had a essentially a conservative, more Republican-leaning council for many years. I think what changed this year is more emphasis on the Democratic vote coming out. The turnout is greater. And we have two candidates on the slate. In the past, we haven't had that. We may have had only one candidate. And mathematically, the way voting goes, sometimes that doesn't work out well. So obviously, having both of us on the slate helped us greatly for both Colin and I. He endorsed me, and I reciprocated and endorsed him. That helped. We did not do any joint campaigning, however. So this is a good thing. But we had a very large ballot of six candidates. And I'm worried that, and I'm still worried, that that diluted the more Democratic-leaning or progressive vote. And when you spread it out amongst more candidates, it's hard to compete with one solid, more conservative candidate.
Right. We certainly saw that. I think in the other Alcohones, well, we should say in Alcohones, there are actually three districts. One of them, District Three, Steve Global won, Councilman Global won unopposed. So we're safe to call that race at 100%. Then you had District Four and District Two. And in one of those, Councilman Ortiz, who was the appointed councilman, filling the vacancy left by Ben Colascha's resignation, he appears headed to reelection fairly handily right now. And that's a good example where he had two opponents, but they were both on the progressive side of, you know, both, I don't know, maybe that's not quite the right word, but he's Estela de los Rios, very, very progressive, endorsed by the Democrats. And then you had Dunya Shabo, who's an Iraqi immigrant, running against him. But again, it could be that if there was such a thing as an anti, you know, Republican or anti-incumbent vote, it would have been split two ways. And so he's winning, although not with a majority of the vote in a three-person race. So interesting thing there. Let's talk a little bit more about Michelle and Stephanie out there in Alcohones. What do you think were the issues that, in a six-person race, very tough, that had voters decide to put you two on top, other than maybe it being a year of the women out there? But beyond that, you know, give yourself some credit. You both have taken some stances on some of the really thorny issues facing Alcohones. Tell us about that.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Okay. I think that maybe because I'm at the city council meetings, and if you've ever seen me at a city council meeting, you know that I'm, if it's something that I believe in, something that I'm passionate about, I'm going at it full force. I'm going at it hard, you know, not to be mean or anything. But I, you know, I will tell them how I feel. I'm very, very honest. And sometimes, you know, some people don't like that. And that's the way I am. I'm honest about things. And I think that's the way to stay. So I think a lot of the, the, yeah, kind of name recognition was because that people have seen me out there inside the city council meetings, fighting for the things that need to be fought for. They see me out with the homeless people, you know, out there making contact and, you know, having that, that relationship out there. They, you know, basically in the mix of it. So I mean, that's where.
I know one thing you and Michelle both have in common, is you've really both outreach a lot to the homeless. Stephanie, I know you've gone out, you talked to the homeless people on the help, on the street, try to get them help. You've done that for a long time. Michelle has actually been homeless herself in the past, and has organized drives to help connect the homeless with resources. I don't think it's an accident that in Alcohones, people consistently list homelessness as the biggest problem, or certainly one of the biggest problems in the city.
That's correct. I think that homelessness was the major issue for me. On my candidate page, I had a lot of interaction with people who were pounding me on the homeless issue. Well, what is, what is your stance on this? Are you going to clean up the city? And one thing I did notice is that the filter was off of a lot of people. There is a lot of people who very, who feel very passionate about the numbers of homeless in our city. Very passionate about the trash that they leave behind, sleeping on the streets. And they want answers. They want them taken care of right away. And, you know, I see where they're coming from. But on the other hand, having been homeless before, you also have to have some compassion, because we don't know what their situation is. We don't know why. And so we have to address those issues. If it's drugs, let's get them off drugs. If it's alcohol, let's get them off alcohol. What really gets me is to see the senior citizens that are homeless on the street. That, that is my biggest fear. I never wanted to be homeless as a senior. And so I've worked really hard. I will save every penny to make sure that I am never homeless. And I think that kind of resonates with people a little bit. But, you know, it's just, you have to do something. We can't sweep the issue under the rug. Stephanie and I will agree on that. We've got to get out there. We've got to help them out. We've got to do something. And I would hope that if Stephanie wins this election, she would call on me to help her out when she gets on to the council. And I would hope that if I win, that she, I had already thought about calling on Stephanie to make sure that, you know, get her, this doesn't have to be a one-person thing.
Yeah, she's nodding in agreement. I can see here. I can't hear that on the radio, folks. Stephanie's nodding at that and saying she would do the same. I think it's great to see people wanting to work together in a bipartisan spirit. We should add that Stephanie was endorsed by the Democratic Party, although these are nonpartisan seats. Michelle is a Republican, but one of several in the race, and her party chose not to endorse any of them in the race. But, I mean, do you feel that kind of frees you a little bit, Michelle, in a way? And if you win, this would show that maybe one doesn't have to have a party endorsement to win a seat in East County. We've certainly seen it done before. La Mesa's had independents reelected. The mayor out there left the Republican Party a while back and was independent, was reelected, where neither party even chose to run anyone against him. So is that changing a little bit, do you think, where one doesn't have to necessarily walk a party line to win a city council seat?
I would hope that we could be a little more open-minded and not have to go down party lines. Because as you said, this was a nonpartisan seat. The people that we are dealing with are, I shouldn't say dealing with, but the people that we are going to be interacting and representing in this, and in this, in this district, they're all parties. Some of them don't belong to any party. They're independent. It shouldn't matter. And so really, at the end of the day, we all want the same thing. Clean and safe neighborhoods, safe interactions with police. We want the homeless to be taken care of in some form or fashion. And how we get there is where we might differ ideologically. But at the end of the day, Stephanie wants the same thing as I want. And it just, it just depends on what gets out there. You know, who, who ends up with the final vote?
It's great to hear. I think a lot of people are probably wishing that Congress would get along as well as the people on this Zoom meeting.
Miriam, I feel, I feel that, that we've already, that we've already won, you know, whether it's Michelle that sits on there, whether it's me that sits on there, you've already won, because you're getting the same thing with both of us. We're, we both are in agreement. We've both talked before. We both get along excellent. She has an awesome personality. She's an awesome human being. She does the same things I do. And we get along great. So you know what? If they get me, they're going to be getting hurt. If they get her, they're going to be getting me. So we've already won the race. So.
That is so nice to hear. And I can tell you, I've heard from at least one council person out there who says, you know, he would be delighted to work with either one of you two. So that's great to hear. George, Lemon Grove is, has probably the toughest budget issues of any of the cities right now. They don't have the big sales tax, you know, base that some of the others do. The, your effort to get a sales tax increase on the ballot, last time it got on the ballot, but it didn't quite pass. What do you think the election results, you know, what were the, what was on the mind of voters out there from an issues standpoint, do you think, in Lemon Grove? And it's, it's an interesting split of who's leading right now. There's you, and there's Leanna, who I don't believe was endorsed by by any party.
Neither political party, no.
Yeah, she's in second place right now. But what do you think, I mean, putting your analyst hat on for a minute, what do you think was on the mind of voters in making these two choices, as well as reelecting Mayor Vazquez, if the lead holds right now? We should add Jerry Jones is in second, not that far behind right now, Councilman Jones.
Well, yeah, if you would have related to the tax proposal, I was a leading supporter. So was Leanna, and so was David Arambula. All three of us were out there collecting signatures and campaigning.
He's in third right now of the four-man.
Yeah, yeah. And so, yeah, yeah. So you see an overwhelming majority of the votes going to people who supported, actually, not only supported, but actually were leaders in the effort to get a tax measure passed in the council race, which is ironic, since the tax measure didn't pass.
No, but do you think that has something to do with the, there was a ballot measure on the ballot this time, though, in Lemon Grove, to tax cannabis, marijuana?
Yeah, yeah. People want to tax cannabis.
It's like 78% yes, right?
Yeah, yeah. Taxing cannabis is very popular. I think that's because people have the attitude that you don't necessarily have to buy cannabis. So they don't see it as an imposition. And I think in the near future, we'll be able to sell people on the idea of a general tax increase for Lemon Grove. Part of the reason I think that is because La Mesa has, has three-quarters cent tax. And you notice when, when Jack was going through the issues, he has to deal with, he didn't mention being short on revenue. And when Alcohones going through the issues, they have a half-cent sales tax. They did have a whole cent in the, in the, within the recent past, but now they have a half-cent. And you hear them talking about helping the homeless. I, if, you know, in Lemon Grove, the budget is the big issue. Okay. And
Yeah, it's pretty much all going for police and fire.
It will be the big issue until we find the revenue that we need long-term for the projects and the programs, the services that the people expect. In the mayor's, in the mayor's race, yeah, Vazquez was one of the leaders for the sales tax increase. Jerry Jones also supported it and also helped us with the campaign.
Yeah, and that's a bipartisan effort.
And Kamal Martin has also been a supporter of the sales tax increase.
Yeah, the third place.
You actually have more than 90% of the vote going to people that supported the sales tax measure. So I'm going to say this is a big victory for, for those of us that want to see more revenue for the city.
Yeah.
And, and the people who are critics of, who are critics of revenue, when are they going to win an election? That's what I want to know. When are they going to win an election?
Yeah, you're right. They haven't. They've consistently been torpedoed on that. So other than the issues that we've already talked about, I'd like to just go around the Zoom room here and have each of you say, you know, if you're, if this holds and you're elected, what is one goal, or if you have more than one you can mention, but one goal of something you would really like to personally do, to bring to the table, maybe introduce, if you're the lucky winner in your race? Who wants to go first?
Well.
Jack in La Mesa.
Since we just talked about revenue, one of the things I want to at least bring into the discussion is more truth about how we can approach equity issues more. And since we just mentioned the sales tax, I see the need for cities to develop revenue. But regressive taxation, I think, is really the wrong answer. Yeah, that's what cities fall to often, rather than finding ways to raise revenues from those who have greater wealth. We have a huge disparity in terms of income, and sales tax just worsens that. So we do need a lot more revenue, but we have to have progressive revenue methods.
So where, what would you consider?
Go ahead. We need to get to the discussion.
What would you consider progressive revenues, and where would you get that from, Jack?
Well, obviously, property tax is a more progressive method of raising revenue, because those who have more expensive real estate end up paying a bit more. So those are things that we need to bring into discussion, so that more of our communities understand different ways to raise revenue. Another is to raise, raise revenue from those who are polluting. So those who are polluting our environment more should be paying more. That's the way we can reduce pollution, as well as illness, and improve the health of our communities. So those are things that I hope our elected officials or communities learn about and work towards. Otherwise, this disparity is going to continue, and our health is going to continue going to be compromised by the way we're, we're developing and living in our communities.
Yeah, we should add, Jack was the longtime president of the Cleveland National Forest Foundation. He was a park ranger for a lot of years. And with the foundation, was involved in some of the big suits against the county back then, over the Climate Action Plan and things. So he's been an advocate of, you know, more, more transit, more bicycle lanes, making communities walking-friendly for pedestrians and for bicycles, you know. I think that's something you and Colin have both advocated for. So maybe that was on the mind of voters too. Maybe they like that vision for their city in La Mesa. Santee, we've certainly seen a lot of interest out there. As I said, the candidates there, Sam Hurst, wasn't able to join us, but a lot of push toward, by some, for housing. She actually has opposed the, opposed the Fenita Ranch, but the people she's run against, and the mayor who is winning reelection out there right now, Mayor Minto, have been, he's been a big advocate of the Fenita Ranch project, which would bring in thousands of homes and a lot of tax revenue. On the downside, there are people who are concerned about, you know, traffic and environmental impacts of that as well.
And it's, and Marion, I'm glad you mentioned all these other cities, because I think it is a regional issue as well. Obviously, La Mesa's not going to solve all of our environmental problems in East County by itself. We need to partner with Alcohones, Santee, and Lemon Grove, and unincorporated communities to really fix many of the things that are harming us the most, and contributing so much to climate change. We know there's disparity. Who suffers from climate change? And who suffers most from health threats like COVID? And who suffers most from health threats like COVID? So this is a issue that we have to talk about and approach it in a wise way. We haven't been doing a very good job. Democrats, Republicans alike have done a very poor job of addressing equity.
Yeah. And we should add that what works in one city may not work elsewhere. Lemon Grove doesn't have the high end housing that say Santee might have, for example, or even La Mesa. But George, if you get onto the council out there, again, we should say, what would your number one goal be for what you hope to maybe introduce, or one or two things that you would bring to the table?
Yeah, yeah. Well, first of all, let me say something about the sales tax is that, is that if you, if you spend $10,000 of your income in Lemon Grove in a year, a three quarters cent sales tax would mean $75. So, it, it's, it's, it's a very small amount of money. And I, I think people need to understand that most of the revenue generated from a sales tax actually would come from outside the city, from people who shop in Lemon Grove. And the people that are low income, they're not going to pay a lot of sales tax because they don't do most of the shopping. And, and so, and, and, and I think in, in sales tax, people often say it's regressive. I'll tell you what's regressive. Budget cuts. Budget cuts are regressive. When we had to cut the recreation programs, that was regressive. That hurt the poor. If we have to, if we have to cut back on parks, the parks that we're able to provide, that hurts the poor. If we have to cut back on our contract with the sheriff department or cut back on our contract with the fire department, that's going to disproportionately affect low income people. And, and, and so, so yeah, one thing I want to do, do is, is obviously get people more informed about the budget, more informed about how it benefits them. And, and, and the one specific idea that I started working on when I was a council member before that I want to get back to is this, is the community advisory council, where we have had ordinary citizens observe as a focus group to study particular issues.
Yeah, La Mesa is doing that too with the homeless task force that actually Jack helped push forward and, and a task force that studied what they needed in a police oversight board. So it's a really powerful tool, I think, to involve the citizens, whatever the issue may be. So that's, that's encouraging to hear. Michelle, what if you're elected, would you like to do in El Cajon?
I think right now, when I arrived around, we saw a lot of seniors. And I'm talking people in their 60s and above, homeless on the street. Winter's coming and we need to get them off the street. And I, I think I'd like to be really aggressive in getting contact made with these men and women. And get them off the street before it gets really bad. I, I don't know why they're still on the street. I don't know if they've been contacted, but I just, I, I just feel really bad for them. And I want to get, see them dead. I want to see them showered. I want to see them, you know, have a place to sleep at night and not on a sidewalk or in the bushes. It's horrible. And I don't know if the homeless task force is still going out and contacting them because of COVID or what the deal is. You know, I work full time, so I don't get to get involved in a lot of these daily or during the day type outreaches. But gosh, I, I can't, I, I just can't see it anymore.
Stephanie, how about you? What would your goal be that you would like to most accomplish when you first join the council? If, if you, if you, if you win?
I definitely think the one thing that I would want to do is seek counsel, not give our already executives that are not represented by a union another raise. At least, I think that they should be at least waiting, you know, two to three years before they get, they are given raises, they're given raises every single year. And this is to the highest paid people in our city. I believe that we're, right now, we're at, at or above the standard of, you know, everybody else. I think being the poorest city in San Diego County, we could afford just to hold back for maybe a year or two to giving those executives their cost of living raises until we give our citizens a cost of living raise. You know, because they're out there, you know.
One of the issues I know in El Cajon that's going to be coming before you will be the future of Parkway Plaza. It's sold, the regional shopping mall. There's been some talk that the owner might want to eliminate all or some of the retail out there and perhaps build housing, which is also needed, but a lot of people are concerned about losing the regional mall. And I know you both said you think it ought to stay at least some of it as, as retail so that we don't lose our regional mall. Do you want to just comment on that? Something that's probably on the minds of just about everybody in El Cajon?
Definitely. Well, when I was growing up and I was a teenager, I was what they called a mall rat. I was there every single weekend, watching movies at the AMC or the, the US, was it the US, the UA Cinema, the Parkway Bowl Theater. So I'm old school. And I definitely think that we need a mall, especially since all we have our kids doing is going like this all day long. We need, they need interaction with each other. They need, you know, another kid to walk by and actually speak to them instead of texting it to them. You know, my son's just 19 years old, so I know a lot about the teenagers nowadays. And they'll, they'll sit in the same room and text each other. You know, they're not talking more. So we definitely need to keep our mall, if not for just our, our, you know, our, to bring revenue into our city, but we definitely need it to keep the interaction between our, our, our community. And it's definitely a good place. A lot of senior citizens go there to, to do their walking because it's hot outside. Because we do have some heat days. So that's, you know, they still get to do their exercise. We have a lot of new moms that are pushing their strollers in the mall because they don't want to give, I'm not shopping, but you know, they got the baby with them. It's, 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 it's a center of a community. And I say that instead of getting rid of it, I say we expand it. I say we put another story on it. Give more people the reason to want to come to El Cajon. So we can get our, our businesses growing again. And we can get, keep our, our city not to be the poorest city in San Diego County. And I think that's one of the things I would love to focus on. I hate that. I hate the fact that we're considered the armpit of San Diego. Or, you know, as William Shatner did on one show, the anus of San Diego. We're not. We're a beautiful valley. We have a rich diversity of people. We have culture. We have different ethnic, it's, it's, we're a melting pot out here. It's a beautiful valley. So.
Yeah, a lot of revitalization going on in El Cajon too, with the reopening of the East County Performing Arts Center, now the Magnolia, which had to shut down again because of COVID. But I know you've also both said that you want to support that when it reopens, make sure it stays a community theater, which would, I think, draw people from across the region, across the county, really. Michelle, let's, let's let you weigh in a little bit on the, you know, the Parkway Plaza and so forth.
I think we need to keep it open. And you know, if they want to put maybe artist lofts or say, a recording studio or something up above it, that's cool. But you know, we've got to keep it open. We have to allow for stores to open and we need to support them. And I'd like to see some, you know, small businesses maybe join together in a space so that you might have a card placed in one corner and candles in another or whatever.
Go to my side.
Exactly. And you know, I heard that we're sorely lacking in fishing stores, you know, where you buy fishing rods and fishing supplies. My son-in-law is a major fisher. And, or I don't know, fisherman. And it's really hard to buy him stuff for Christmas and his birthday because we're, you know, Turner's may may not be open or the bath shop. We need to get some more stores like that. So the men can vote for me.
There you go. Well, I think, last question, but I, I'm sure anybody else out there who may be thinking someday of running for a political office might value any tips. What advice would you give? What would, is the most important advice to any future potential candidate thinking of running for a seat in East County?
I would definitely say it's the, it's the contact with your citizens. It's a contact you get, getting out there. I remember when I was running in 2016, I was out towards, which would be District Four, way down there off of Chase. And I knocked on the door and the lady said to me, you know, I've lived here 40 years and I've never had any, anybody who's running for anything come to my door. And I think that people really do appreciate it. And that was one of the things that got me running was when I contacted Ben one time, he came over to my house. When you have somebody who wants to come to your house, wants to come into your home and is willing to just speak with you a one-on-one, you feel like that would be somebody that would really represent you, that you could really put your trust into. And that's what, that's, it's the, it's the ties with your community that are really going to make or break it. So if you have good ties with your community and you're somebody who can get out there and voice your opinion and say things, and you have a common sense, that's somebody that should run.
George, you have run for office more than anybody here. You've been on the Lemon Grove School Board forever and then on the council and then, you know, off taking a break from it, now back again, maybe. What advice would you give, your words of wisdom through the years?
Yeah, definitely. It's all about voter contact. It's all about connecting to voters through your, the statement you, in the voter pamphlet makes a huge difference. The mail you send could make a huge difference. I spent a lot on digital advertising this time. I, I think if there's one thing that rookie candidates might not realize, it's, it's the, how much helpful money can be. And, and I tell people, don't hesitate to call your friends, ask them for money. I, I accepted $200 from my brother, you know. You know, and, 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 you know, don't, yeah, I tell people, don't hesitate because, because as one, one contributor once told, my mother ran for office and she, and, and I learned a lot from her. One of her contributors once said that she was contributing money because she said, if you didn't do it, I would have to do it. And, and so take that attitude that you're doing people a favor by running for office. Because, because those of us that, that run for office, we're taking something on. We're giving up time that we could be doing other things.
Yeah, it really is a big responsibility.
Yeah, we are. And, and, and I think that it helps when you call people, it helps, and you'll make, call people that will realize that, that will appreciate that. And some people give, give me 100, 200, or maybe just 50 if they don't have a lot of money. But people contribute money to me because they don't necessarily live in Lemon Grove. They don't necessarily care about the specific issues I'm working on. They give me money because they think, oh, George is working hard and I want to help him. And they know, and they also think that with, with me running, it means that they don't have to run. Or, yeah, I mean, it's not exactly that, but you know what I mean? It's like a few people run and many, many more people that think, wow, I'm so glad that they're willing to do that.
Yeah, they want someone they can have confidence in. Michelle is probably the newest person to politics on the block here. What what advice would you give to first timers there?
You need to build up thick skin now. If you find on running in two years or four years, grow thick skin because you are going to be attacked. Your intellect, your abilities, just the fact that you are challenging someone who is well known in a community, you will be attacked. So you have to grow a thick skin. Make your contacts. Make sure that you make, you know, that networking with community members, with leaders and with this, this. Don't be ashamed to take money from a group. I'm not saying be, you know, take money from a special interest group that like builders and they, or developers and they want to get projects in. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about don't be ashamed to take money from a, a, a private person who wants to donate to your campaign. Because that's going to pay for online ads. That's going to pay for mailers. That's going to pay for your signs so that you don't have to take it out of your own pocket. Because if you're a regular citizen like Stephanie and I, we don't have a lot of money just sitting around waiting to just throw it away. You've got to depend on other people. And I think just getting your name out there, especially a first timer like I was, get your name out there and, and make sure that they're always out there. The online ads were fantastic. I had a great web guy come on board late. He made a mistake. And he had me endorsed by the Republican Party, which wasn't true. And I kind of freaked out for a moment and said, no, 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 take this off. It's going to bite me. And it did a little for a short time. But, um,
Happened to, but yeah.
It was, it happened. But Miles was awesome. He did some great work for me and I was so appreciated. And I'm feeling very honored to be at this point.
Yeah, well, good for you. And I will say, I do think that the whole landscape is changing with the advent of, of online social media groups, some of which are very, very active, things like Nextdoor and, you know, things like Twitter and Instagram and Facebook, certainly, online media like, like our own outlet, East County Magazine. These are all things where you don't have to rely on, you know, having a lot of money to do mailers. It certainly helps if you can. But it's not impossible to win without it. We've seen some candidates recently. Last time around, I mean, when, when Mr. Houlihan won his seat in Santee over very well-funded interests, and yet he did it primarily through social media. So there's, there's more than one okay channel or successful channel, I think now, but it isn't necessarily the richest candidate that can buy the seat anymore.
No, I, I, I was the candidate with the most money four years ago and I didn't win. So.
So it shows it. Well, we've seen it in La Mesa too, a number of years ago. There was a candidate, actually Laura Lothian, when she ran for mayor or council the first time, I think, had spent more money than any candidate ever, and yet came in last in that particular race. She was new, of course. So it isn't, it can make a difference. We've certainly seen well-funded candidates still to this day who do very, very well. But we've also seen some who didn't have any money, who just relied on, on the social media and the online media to do it. So times are changing, as they say. Jack, we'll let you have the last word on this one. What words of wisdom do you have for potential candidates in the future?
Yeah, well, it's unfortunate that running for office is so expensive. So I'm glad all of you had that discussion. My advice to anyone considering running for office is besides what the three of you have mentioned, to do your homework. You know, running for office is different from one jurisdiction to another. La Mesa being a, we don't have districts for city council. So my win number, that's the number of votes I needed to win, particularly in a larger election like this one. I had estimated to be at least 10,000 or more.
Yeah.
It's 10,000 people I needed to convince to vote for me. And that's a huge task for a candidate that's not well-known. So I had to have a huge, large number of volunteers, a lot of resources to, to make that happen. And luckily I had a fabulous kitchen cabinet, campaign team and a large group of volunteers to help me get, get there. But, but I feel sorry for the other candidates that I, I don't think they realize what they were getting into when they threw their name in the hat. And then realize not only the cost, but the, the task of reaching that many number of people within the city.
Yeah. And I, and I want to say, I want to give a shout out really to everybody who ran in every one of these races, whether they're here today or not. I think they all had some good ideas and visions for their cities, you know, certainly a passion for their communities and you know, just because you didn't win this, this time doesn't mean you might not in the future. A lot of times it takes persistence, two, three, four, five, you know, tries at it. And certainly it's not over yet. So we'll be tracking those results. And if we missed somebody here today who comes up and winds up being a winner that, that wasn't on top right now, we'll certainly look forward to having them back on a future radio show. So in the meantime, I want to offer some, you know, tentative congratulations to the four of you for doing so well in your races. Listeners, if you just tuned in late, we have been speaking with candidates who right now are looking like they might be winners for city council seats out there. Jack Schu in La Mesa, George Gastel in El Cajon, or in Lemon Grove, sorry. And out in El Cajon, Stephanie Harper and Michelle Mitchell, who right now are separated by just 44 votes in, in their district race. So I want to thank all of you for joining us today on the East County Magazine Show on KNSJ 89.1 FM, Viscanso.
Hi.
Hi, thank you.
Okay, good luck.